Good morning, everyone, and welcome to this week's study session for Spokane City Council. First, we're going to start off with an interview for a nominee to the Bicycle Advisory Board. And I'm not sure if I'm going to pronounce this right, but I believe it's Karim Habib. Karim, if you're there, if you want to speak up, and please introduce yourself so I'll know how to say your name.
Yeah, of course. Thank you so much. My name is Karim Habib. I am working as Transportation Engineer II with the Washington State Department of Transportation. I joined WashDOT coming from Canada. I came last year. I was working for the B.C. Ministry of Transportation Infrastructure. And I have very good knowledge regarding active transportation and a lot of passion that I want to share with the Bicycle Advisory Board.
Well, that's awesome. This is pretty pro forma, but I'll see if anyone has any questions for you? No?
I have a question. How do you like Spokane?
Spokane is a very nice city. People are genuinely kind, and there is no traffic here, so I love it. I love the weather.
Oh, no traffic. I like that.
I am very happy in Spokane, to be honest.
Great. Thank you.
I want more people to come to Spokane from bigger cities where they have real problems. And so keep, I'm glad you're here. Keep telling people. Keston Bringle.
Yeah. Karim, what are the odds that you ever would have said you hate Spokane in response to that question?
Sorry?
No, he, he's been silly. Okay. He was making a joke, so, but anyway. Karim, basically what will happen is your name will come to us in the middle of an actual legislative meeting, and we will vote. And you'll be appointed to the board at that point. You don't need to be at the meeting. We'll give you a notification that you are. We thank you so much for your service and really look forward to the perspective you bring to these challenges. And I will say, you've come at a very good time to Spokane. I think the city government is really embracing active transportation, including our engineers. So you can have a big impact. So thanks for doing that. Take care.
Thank you.
That's my pleasure. Thank you so much. Okay, thanks. Bye.
All right. Next, we're going to hear from the Washington Department of Transportation on the connection proposed between I-90 and the north-south corridor. And I've got Terrence Lynch. Is that who I am?
Yeah, Terrence Lynch. Thank you.
Okay, great.
Well, let me set up here. Small world it is. Actually.
So you need to be speaking into that mic.
Oh, sorry.
That's all right. That's all right.
Sorry. I was going to say, small world it is. I actually hired Karim last June.
Okay.
Oh, all right. Yes.
All right. So again, thanks for having me here today. WashDOT always appreciates being invited to talk about the North Spokane Corridor. Obviously, a very regionally significant project. So my name is Terrence Lynch. I'm the Project Engineer for the North Spokane Corridor Design Office. I've been in this role for a little over a year. Prior to that, I was the Assistant Project Engineer in the North Spokane Corridor Design Office for four years. And then prior to that, three years as a Project Manager for the North Spokane Corridor Office. So I've been involved with it on the design side for a little over eight years now. With me, I have Mr. Larry Larson, our Assistant Regional Administrator for Development. What we're going to talk about today, sorry, I'm going to keep leaning away from this, is give a real quick update on the NSC projects that are underway in the timeline. Funding status, I can just say right now, we're very excited because we've seen this, both the Senate and the House's budgets.
Just to interrupt, aren't you glad you came this week instead of a month or so ago?
Correct. Yes. I can say that. I can say that very happily now, that things are looking really good, and there's not going to be any delay, assuming we get the ink on the budget, right? That hasn't been signed yet, but so far, so good. So I'll give a quick update on the NSC projects and the timeline. And then really, you know, the meat and potatoes of why I'm here is that we have a big decision in front of us about how the NSC is going to connect to Interstate 90. And so we have two alternates that I'm going to go over some details and the differences and the trade-offs, et cetera. We are in the midst of a public engagement blitz right now. I have a timeline that shows everything we've done and what we have coming up, because we want public feedback. So with that part of the presentation, I'll give a brief history of the connection. I'll talk about Alternate 1 and Alternate 2. And then there was a third alternate design that I'm going to talk about briefly, but it's important because we decided that we want to give the same presentation to everybody. This was an alternate that was requested by the community, in particular, the East Spokane Business Association, almost a year ago. And we took the time to review it and see if it would work as a third alternative. So I want to kind of report out on that. And then we'll do the operational results comparisons. Then we'll look again at the Alternate 1 and Alternate 2 trade-offs. There's also an off-ramp westbound to Altamont that's up for public opinion on whether it's included in the design or not. So I'll go over a little bit about that. Then we'll look at some 3D visuals. We've got some great 3D visuals where we can compare Alternate 1 and Alternate 2 almost side by side. So you can really get that look and feel of what it's going to look like in the after. And then we'll talk briefly about Avista Relocation. They're clearly the largest private utility that is being affected by the North Spokane Corridor's connection to Interstate 90. So we feel like it's appropriate to at least bring them into the conversation because they want to be partners in how we develop the project with the community. And then next steps on public engagement. So that's the bulk of the agenda. So let's get right into it. So right now, there are currently four projects underway for the North Spokane Corridor. I'm going to use the cursor here. So there's a project north of the Spokane River. It's called Spokane River to Columbia. It's basically going to build the interchange at Wellesley. That's in its third year, and we are expected to complete that this year. So we will have an extended drivable link down to Wellesley in the northbound direction. Obviously, south of Wellesley, there's no place to drive, so we won't open any of those ramps. There's also a trail project that's been underway for a couple of years. It's going to build almost two miles of trail from where the Columbia Trailhead ends today all the way down to about Jackson Avenue, which is north of the Spokane River. That project is also going to be completed in 2023. So we're super excited about that. It's got a lot of great amenities and features and plazas associated with it. Then we have the project that we've all probably seen next to SCC, where the two mainline structures are being built. We call it the Skyway. That's going to finish up in 2023. So we have three significant projects that are going to finish up this year. All three of those projects were impacted by COVID-related issues. So they are a little bit behind schedule, but, you know, a lot of us are dealing with that at this point. And then we're really excited that we have a fourth project that we just advertised and awarded. And that's the Spokane River Crossing Project. So that's actually going to build three bridges over the Spokane River. The two mainline NSC bridges, northbound and southbound, and then a pedestrian bridge that's more down at the river level. And it's actually going to have a connection to the Centennial Trail on the north side. So we're really excited about that one as well. That's a three-year project. And so probably going to be wrapping up towards the end of 2025. They should be turning dirt on it here in the next month or so. So that's kind of a status update. What we have in front of us are what we call Stage 2, and that's going to build from Mission down to Alki, so south of the BNSF Main Corridor. Stage 3, which is going to build between Sprague and Alki, and then, of course, the connection to Interstate 90. Stages 2 and Stages 3 are supposed to get advertised in 2024, and then, as well as Interstate 90, actually. That's going to be delivered design-build, so we're going to issue the RFQ in early 2024. All right. So let's move on to actually, again, what we're talking about here, the connection to I-90. So why is WashDOT re-engaging about the NSC connection to I-90 now? Well, we have a decision to make, and we need to make it within the next month or so in order to keep our schedule. Everybody's waiting for the North Spokane Corridor to get completed, right? And so the big decisions need to be made. So we want to make that decision, but we want public feedback on that decision. And so basically, we look for, you know, meaningful engagement so that people have an opportunity to participate in decisions about activities that may affect their environment or health. Public's contribution can influence the regulatory agency's decision. That's absolutely true. We're going to use all this feedback from this online survey that is actually live right now. And as I get towards the end of the presentation, you'll see the link, and there's a QR code. Happy to obviously send that out as well to anybody who wants that. But it's live right now, and we have almost 400 or over 400 responses right now. And we haven't even mailed out almost 7,000 mailers to the neighborhoods to get interest in providing us feedback. So we're expecting it's going to be, give us a lot of good information to use in order to help us make our decision. Community concerns will be considered in the decision-making process, and decision-makers will seek out and facilitate the involvement of those potentially infected. So that's why we're doing this public engagement blitz right now. So here we are talking a little, this is a little bit of the history. So I'm not going to spend too much time on this slide because you can't see any details. The subsequent slides show more details. But originally, when we went through our environmental process in the 1990s, the connection of the NSC to the interstate was actually envisioned as a collector-distributor system, which essentially meant that the only thing that connected between Hamilton interchange and Sprague was the NSC. There were no local accesses provided to the NSC in between Hamilton and Sprague. But we've evolved from that. That included a lot of work that is actually unnecessary. And again, as I mentioned, it didn't provide any accesses to the neighborhood. And access became more and more important as we evolved from that original environmental process. So looking at the design through a practical solutions lens, we started looking at like, how can we shrink the connection and right-size it for the needs? And also provide accesses, provide more features that weren't originally included in the collector-distributor system. So Alternate 1 basically replaces seven or eight of the existing 10 accesses. And so the reason it's seven or eight is because of that ramp that I was talking about, westbound to Altamont. That's up for public input on whether or not we include it in the design. If we don't, it would be seven. If we do, it would be eight. The ramp that goes away, a lot of people ask this question, so I already kind of preemptively answer it. If we go with eight, let's say that ramp is included, there will be no westbound on-ramp from Freya. It just doesn't work. We can't make it work from an operations perspective because of the two ramps that are further to the west, one to Second Avenue and one to Hamilton. They just don't work. It causes congestion and it fails. So we have to remove that ramp entirely from the design. And then in Alternate 1, there is no ramp westbound from Altamont. But that's the biggest decision point that we're talking about right now, is the difference between Alternate 1 and Alternate 2. In Alternate 2, it's included. That ramp is included, the westbound on-ramp from Altamont. So kind of getting back to these bullets here, so it adds four NSC connections. Alternate 1 adds four NSC connections, adds roundabouts at Altamont that weren't originally included in the original analysis. We showed that intersections would function acceptably with Alternate 1, but the neighborhood said, we like the idea of roundabouts. And so we've included them in the design in both alternatives. It also adds a connection from Second Avenue to the NSC that was not included previously. So that's a nice feature, to be able to get on the NSC from Second Avenue. That is also included in both alternates. So now Alternate 2, real quickly, so it replaces eight or nine of those 10 accesses. And again, that's all about that westbound on-ramp from Altamont. That's why those numbers bump up by one. This keeps getting in the way. Sorry. And then also, again, the same NSC, four NSC connections, the same ramp from Second Avenue. The thing to note, and I'll go over this more on the next slide when you can see the details, is in order to add that ramp in, we actually have to route Hamilton to Third Avenue. It can't stay directly connected to the interstate as is. So those folks that are using Hamilton to get onto eastbound I-90 have to route to Third through the roundabout at Altamont and then get on further east than Altamont. So that's a big note, and I'll go over a few more of those details here in a minute. So here we look at Alternate 1 and Alternate 2 review. So I've already gone over quite a few of these on the previous slide. But what Alternate 1 does is it leaves Hamilton directly connected to eastbound 90 as it is today, so no change. It also keeps the off-ramp to Altamont in the eastbound direction as it is today, so no change. And it also keeps the Freya eastbound off-ramp as it is today, so no change. Those three ramps stay as they are today. But it doesn't have an on-ramp from Altamont in the eastbound direction. If you wanted, if you were in the Altamont area and you wanted to get onto eastbound 90 to go points further east, you would have to travel through the signals at Thor and Freya and then get on a ramp further to the east. Alternate 2 does add that connection right here, from Altamont to eastbound 90. But as I just mentioned, it does require us routing the Hamilton traffic to Third Avenue to go through this roundabout and then get on that ramp further to the east. So that actually adds quite a bit of infrastructure in order to create that. And that's just the geometric challenge that we've had, is that in order to get a ramp underneath two other ramps and get our minimum vertical clearances, we actually have to move the diverge points further to the west for both the NSC off-ramp and for the Freya off-ramp. And unfortunately, we have to move them far enough that they start impinging on the Hamilton off-ramp. And so that causes congestion that fails, causes failure. So it does add quite a bit of infrastructure to the projects. And we'll see some more of those details in the trade-off slides that's coming up. So here's that Alternate 3 design. So basically, when we presented Alternate 1 and Alternate 2 to the East Spokane Business Association last June, the first thing when we got through the presentation was, well, why can't you do both? Why can't you add the on-ramp from Altamont and keep Hamilton directly connected? Because they didn't seem to care much for the Hamilton traffic being on Third Avenue to get through that roundabout. And I understand why. So we did listen to their requests, and we went back and we put our design team on it. We said, is there any way we can make this fit? And yes, the answer, after a couple of months' worth of very thoughtful design, we were able to make it fit and meet our design standards by minimizing the spaces between the on-ramps and the off-ramps. But unfortunately, then we went to the next step, which is actually the most important step, is we did the traffic modeling to see how it would actually work. And it doesn't perform as well as Alternate 1 and Alternate 2. It's quite a bit worse. So some key operational design considerations. I'll just talk about the first bullet there. It's basically FHWA requires that I-90 must function or operate at or better with the project than without. They won't let us connect to the interstate if we're going to degrade operations on the interstate system. They'll just say no, and we would be dead in the water. So that is something that's obviously a critical component of making the connection to Interstate 90. So here's the traffic engineering results. So basically what these are, we call them heat maps, but they basically show congestion. The color's not quite showing up on the screen as well, but, so, it actually looks worse. There's a lot of black showing up on the screen, but there's, on the far left is what we call the no-build. So that's if we didn't build the project. In our design year in 2040, which is the year that we projected the traffic volumes out to, that's what it looks like in the AM direction. So this slide shows westbound, AM on top, and the PM on the bottom. And as you can see, without the project in both AM and PM, there's congestion in this corridor. Anybody who's driven the corridor between Hamilton and Sprague sees that that is a congested corridor, very much so in the morning westbound and very much so in the afternoon eastbound. So what you're looking at here is, so just to the second green box to the right is Alternate 1. And you can see, we clean up a lot of that congestion. So black is bad. I should go back and say, black is bad. When you see black, that's stop-and-go traffic. That's under 20 miles an hour. Alternate 1, in the morning westbound, looks good. Alternate 2 looks good, and Alternate 3 looks good. In the PM, they all three look fairly well as well, a lot better than without the project. And the reason for that they all look the same is basically there are no changes in the westbound direction. So north side of Interstate 90, both designs are virtually the same. So that's not the big decision point. It's what happens on the south side of I-90 in the eastbound direction. So you'll see that on the next slide. So here's our eastbound results, AM on top, PM on the bottom. In the morning in 2040, eastbound AM, still not a lot of congestion because most folks are coming into the city to work, not leaving the city to go to work. So that stands to reason. Alternate 1, Alternate 2, both look pretty good. They're slightly different because the designs are different. It just kind of shifts around that slowing. But this is light green. That's not bad at all. We'll take that any day of the week. Alternate 3 starts to show some congestion, even in the morning, which is the lighter volumes. And in the PM, well, again, we've all seen this. If you're going out of town in that 415 to 515 range, you're stuck in this traffic. It's a sea of red lights. Both of our alternates clean that up significantly, again, because they're different. It shifts that little bit of turbulence around, but yellow is good. We'll take that. With Alternate 3, it starts to show black in the PM pretty significantly. And if I could actually break this map down by lane, because this is an average over the four lanes that it would be, the far right lane is black. And that's because motorists are camping out in that right lane because there's three, you know, there's three ramps to Altamont, Freya, or the NSC. And they're waiting to get off on one of those. So they're just kind of hanging out in the right lane, waiting to get on their off-ramp. And then when Hamilton comes on, that just causes all that turbulence and basically causes stop-and-go congestion that we don't want. So this doesn't even, again, doesn't really look as bad when you average it across the four lanes as it really is. So the conclusion is that based on those operational results, WashDOT doesn't recommend Alternate 3, advancing Alternate 3. And additionally, FHWA supports our decision to take Alternate 3 off the table and focus on Alternate 1 and Alternate 2. So now let's talk about the trade-offs with each one. So here's Alternate 1. So I've mentioned some of these things already, but I'm going to go over them again. So it does add that connection to the NSC from Second Avenue, and that's right here. It does add roundabouts at Altamont. It leaves Hamilton on-ramp connected directly to eastbound I-90 as is. I've already mentioned that. It leaves the off-ramp to Altamont eastbound I-90 as is, and that Freya off-ramp from eastbound I-90 as is. It does have one less access point. It doesn't provide that connection from Altamont eastbound to I-90. It reduces infrastructure. You'll see that in the 3D visuals pretty well. It's less costly in the neighborhood of $25 to $30 million because of the less infrastructure. It does take two minutes longer to get to eastbound I-90 if you're at Altamont because you do have to go through the signals at Thor and Freya to get onto eastbound I-90. So there is two minutes added to your travel time. There are slight.
And where would you get on, and once you get east of Thor-Freya?
There is a ramp just, I will say, about a block east of Freya.
Okay.
Yep.
It's the current on-ramp.
It'll be revised. There's a ramp there today. It's going to be a ramp there in the after. It's going to be relocated slightly, though. Redone. Yep. There's slightly less motors through the East Central neighborhood. And the reason for that is because there's no ramp to eastbound I-90. When you put a ramp in there, people are going to go to that ramp, so, right? That draws trips from the neighborhood or points further south through the neighborhood to get to that ramp.
So have you guys done modeling for local traffic, then, to be able to say that?
Yes. Yep, they show up.
Is that information that you can share with us? Because I'd love to see the modeling on Third and then as well on East Central.
Yeah. So what the model actually shows, as far as the travel demand model, is the primary roads and the arterials. It doesn't have like every local road as far as numbers on those. But you can generally look at like the number differences between northbound Altamont traffic in Alternate 1 and Alternate 2, and you can see the differences in the vehicles.
I guess my fear is, you know, we don't really know what's going to happen in the next, what, 16, 17 years? And there could be a lot of development. There could be a lot of changes in that area. And when we say two minutes today, it could be 20 minutes by then if there's a lot of changes and a lot of congestion in the area. So I just think it'd be good to look at all those numbers.
Yeah, absolutely. Happy to share. And then last two bullets here is there's more opportunity for locating the pedestrian bridges over I-90. So the three bridges that were there that there are now two. Unfortunately, we had to take one down early due to some structural deficiencies. But we are going to relocate those three bridges, and so there's more opportunity with Alternate 1 than Alternate 2. And that's due to there's less infrastructure, so less conflict. And then there's more opportunity for place-making and surplus land development with Alternate 1. So let's look at, talk about Alternate 2. So a lot of the bullets are similar, but the reverse. So it adds the connection to the NSC from Second Avenue, adds the roundabouts at Altamont, provides that one more access point. So there's your access point from Altamont. It doesn't show up super well on the screen, but it's underneath these two overhead bridges, and it makes that connection. But it does require routing Hamilton to Third Avenue for those motors to go through the roundabout and get on that ramp. One thing that's interesting is it does require metering at Altamont southbound, right at the roundabout. And the reason for that is, we all know how roundabouts work. You get to the roundabout, you defer to the people coming from the left and find a gap. Well, because Third Avenue is one-way, people on southbound Altamont, they don't have to defer to anybody. There's nobody coming from the left, so they just have a free entry into the roundabout, which unfortunately during the peak hour, then it makes it hard to find gaps for all those folks that are eastbound on Third. So we actually have to meter in the peak hour. It wouldn't be a 24-hour-a-day, seven-day-a-week meter. It would just be during the peak hour to create those gaps. Yeah, go ahead.
So a roundabout on Second and a roundabout on Third under the Altamont overpass, which
Correct.
Right now, traffic, you can't get through that one block. So if you're getting off and going to Altamont, going east, traffic's already backed up. So I don't know if they started Freya-Thor construction already, but it was backed up this morning. To make that turn, you could be sitting there waiting to take a left-hand turn to go north, even loop back on the Second. So did we talk about how much time to get through two roundabouts in a one-block area under an overpass?
So the traffic modeling actually shows that So the traffic modeling actually shows that the roundabouts perform much better than signals, and that was a reason for upgrading or changing out to roundabouts. They perform a lot better. But again, you know, if Alternate 2 were selected, then you're going to put, if you're southbound, you're going to get stuck at that meter during the peak hour. So it actually creates more, or an increase in travel time if you're southbound on Altamont and want to get to eastbound I-90 because you're going to have to wait. You'll be metered so that the Third Avenue traffic can get through the roundabout.
And both these roundabouts will be equal on both sides? I was just looking at the map thinking, are they, they will be equal in size on Second and Third?
Correct. We haven't gotten into the design details yet, but we modeled them with the same lane configurations on both sides. So let's see, I'm going to pick back up here. So more infrastructure, more expensive, that $25 to $30 million. It does take two minutes less to get to eastbound I-90 from Altamont because of that ramp. It does bring slightly more motorists through the East Central neighborhood because of that ramp. And then there's less opportunity for locating the pedestrian bridges over I-90, and then less opportunity for placemaking and surplus land development. So here's a map that shows potential surplus land development and the comparisons between the two. So what you're seeing in those yellow squares are possibilities for potential surplus land. When I say potential, it's because we haven't gone through, far enough through the design to know where, how we're going to need, or where we're going to need to treat stormwater, how much, all that stuff. So maybe not all of those yellow squares are going to be available, but right now they look like there's possibilities. So you can see that in Alternate 1, there's a few more yellow squares, mainly east of Altamont, up into about the Trumpet area. And that's because with Alternate 2, we have to move the design further out to the edge of our right-of-way to create the space to add that ramp in there, and then also bring these two ramps to Freya and NSC over them. So that's why you get a little bit less possibility for surplus land in Alternate 2. There's more surplus land not shown on this map. We're focusing on the west side. But if I had a map that went all the way out to Sprague, there's surplus land on the west side of the Trumpet as well, or east side of Trumpet, excuse me.
And in this surplus land, the purpose of this after construction is complete is going to be for us to be able to build housing on. Is that correct? Or is there another purpose for this land?
Actually, Senate Bill 5853, which I'm not super familiar with, but that passed in the last legislative session, is kind of unique in the sense that it allows, it's specific to the North Spokane corridor, and it allows for the, I should say, allows and requires that the public be involved in what happens with the surplus land. So right now, we haven't really developed the process yet for how the community is going to be engaged to get the feedback on how to use that land. But there's going to be opportunities. I mean, it's going to be community-driven. So if the community would like to see certain things, and some might, could be revenue-generating, like leased-for housing or other features, some of those ideas might be placemaking, amenities, parks, things of that nature, but it's going to be community-driven.
Okay.
The good thing is, is that we're going to try to iron out that process because there's other land north of the Spokane River that we're not using that we're going to be, you know, kind of working out the process. So by the time we get down and finished with I-90 and know what's left over, we should have the process pretty well worked out.
I was going to say, the original intent when that bill was passed was that that land would be primarily reconverted back to housing, which was taken away when they expanded for the freeway. Other uses, but primarily was for housing.
Yeah.
I guess my question is, so if it's going to be community-driven, is there any sort of funding from WashDOT in order to invest in what the community desires? Because, I mean, if the community wants a plaza and we don't have the funding for a plaza, there's not going to be a plaza. So I'm just kind of curious how that part of it's going to work.
So what I understand is funded right now is enough to go through the whole design, the whole public engagement process, and then the whole scoping, and then even the design. So I don't know what the number is, but I heard that that was funded through Ledge. But as far as the construction, construction of whatever comes out of that, no, hasn't been funded yet, to my knowledge.
Okay.
But again, some of those ideas could be revenue-generating, in which they don't need actual funding to construct because developers could, you know, pay to construct.
Okay, one more question for you. So if you're on, say you're in the Lincoln Heights neighborhood, South Hill, and you want to access the NSC under either Alternative 1 or 2, what would, how would you, how would you access it?
You would want to go down Freya.
Okay. And then from there?
And then take a left on Second Avenue.
Okay.
And then you'd get on, the ramp is right here. So this is Tapio Center. So just to the west of Tapio Center, there's going to be a connection from Second Avenue to the NSC northbound.
And so I guess that's going to be a massive intersection there with people coming from all different directions to access the freeway in different spots. And so I'm just, I'm very worried about what that congestion could look like right there at those peak hours. I mean, I assume you guys have modeled that, but it just, that worries me.
We have modeled that, and we actually, at one point, were floating the ideas of possibly changing the intersection control to roundabouts, and the city said, no, no thanks on that. So the signals do perform. They don't perform great. I mean, they're, but they're not at a failure level of service, but I'm certainly willing to share that data as well.
And I don't think I saw Second on Alternate 1. Is it still Second Avenue on Alternate 1?
It is. Yep, they're basically the same ramp in both designs.
Okay.
Yep. I'm almost through here. So let's talk real quick about the off-ramp to Altamont. So this ramp right here, we modeled, did our traffic modeling with it and without it, and basically it really has no real consequence on Interstate 90. There's a little bit of turbulence created if we add this ramp in here, but not enough to warrant, you know, taking it out or not considering it. So this ramp right here, what, again, we're calling it the westbound off-ramp to Altamont, is up for public input on whether or not the public would like to see this included in the design.
Terrence, quick question, just sort of analog to Councilmember Cathcart. So if you were wanting to get on the NSC, you'd do the Freya. But if you wanted to get from the NSC, get off, and get to the south side of the freeway in those neighborhoods, where would you?
This ramp right here has been included in the design for quite a while. It's an off-ramp to Second Avenue.
Okay.
Yep. And then you'd have to go down Altamont and get to the South Hill.
So, Council President, I don't think anything will be different than Thor, Freya, and Altamont. Those are the two, not that Altamont's the best option, but that's how we've been getting off the hill now. That's where you go.
Yep. Thank you. All right, so let's take a look at those 3D visuals. Right here. So basically what I have here are some slides, and they're going to go in order. So the same viewpoint for each one. It starts with Alternate 1 and then Alternate 2, so you can literally see the differences when I click between slides. I would ask you to focus your attention mostly on the right side of your screen, the south side of I-90, because that's where the differences are. Everything on the north side, it's important, but it's no different between the slide decks. So that's, as we thumb through these, pay attention to the right side and the south side of I-90.
And just to start, we're looking east here, or no?
Yeah, this is looking east. Yeah, and I'll try to narrate that. Yeah, this is looking east from over the Hamilton interchange. So there's Alternate 1. There's Alternate 2. This is a little bit further to the east, kind of a bird's-eye view over those roundabouts at Altamont. So there's Alternate 1. There's Alternate 2. Now you're closer to the Trumpet, so a little bit further east. Alternate 1. Alternate 2. Here's a view looking northeast. Alternate 1. Alternate 2. This is looking northwest. Alternate 1, Altamont's off in the background here. Alternate 1. Alternate 2.
So in this, in this last slide right here, in Alternate 2, this is the reason why we're losing that land surplus on the south side is because that's bumping out to the south quite a bit more, right?
Correct, yeah. We have to route Third almost to the edge of the right-of-way in order to create space for this off-ramp that goes to the NSC. And, you know, when I talked about the added infrastructure, we had to move that diverge point to that ramp further to the west, creating a need for a bridge over Altamont and these retaining walls on either side of that. So that's a big bulk of the cost.
First of all, I thought I was getting my eyes checked.
Pardon me?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I got my eyes checked. But Alternate 2, when you bump out further to the south, you know, East Central does not have very much commercial zone property. So the old zip trip, that took out the biggest footprint of commercial zone property in our neighborhood. So till that land's developed, we have nowhere to grow at this time. So that was a big issue going forward. And I understand where you're at, but that is a deficit to our community once again, that we don't have commercial property.
And Alternate 2? Yeah, Alternate 2 definitely uses up a lot of that available space, whereas Alternate 1 provides more, more space.
Yeah. Just take it, not give them back.
Here's a view looking southeast. Alternate 1. Oh, no, I'm actually wrong. I think this is looking northwest. Yeah. Thanks. Alternate 2. This is looking southeast. Alternate 1. Alternate 2. Just another vantage point looking southeast. Alternate 1. Alternate 2. This is looking southwest. Alternate 1. Alternate 2. Another one looking southwest. Alternate 1. Alternate 2. And now this is looking directly west. Alternate 1. Alternate 2. And our final one's just looking west again. Alternate 1. Alternate 2.
Now, is, are either of these impacting where Third intersects with Liberty Park and where we might potentially see a cap on 90?
The land bridge?
Yeah.
There is, it does change more in Alternate 2 because we have to realign Hamilton to connect with Third Avenue, so there's some reconstruction there. They both will accommodate a land bridge over in the Liberty Park area.
But if Third Avenue, and I, this may not happen, but if Third Avenue was essentially to not cut through the park there, which would be my dream, right, that you would have just one clear park from one side of 90 all the way into Liberty Park, does that concept not work with what the changes are that are envisioned for the NSC?
So I guess I'm not...
Because if we're moving traffic on the Third, is there, is there an issue there where that could get either realigned or, you know, relocated essentially?
In Alternate 2, we would realign Third. I'm not exactly sure, you know, the details on that. In Alternate 1, Third would say where it is today.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, I think. Any other questions on the visuals before we cruise through the last couple of slides? So talking a little bit about Avista, I mentioned that they're obviously a big private utility that's impacted. So the NSC connection to I-90 forces the relocation from the north side to the south side of I-90. Avista will likely remain on WashDOT right-of-way. The preferred route has been proposed, but we haven't said yes to it yet because we need to get through this decision. We need to get, we need more information before we can say yes to the, to the preferred route that they've proposed. The good news is that the relocation will result in less infrastructure and expanded capacity. I've heard something on the neighborhood of 75 poles go away with the redesign and seven crossings of I-90. I think there's 11 out there today, and it goes down to four. A couple of Avista representatives are here, so.
And it's all above ground, it's not...
It's all above ground.
All above ground.
Yep. And then Avista, you know, it's important for Avista to, folks to know that they look forward to collaborating with the neighborhood and WashDOT to help envision new amenities. They want to be a partner when we start getting into the phase where we talk about, you know, features that can be included with the project. Avista wants to partner with WashDOT in that, in that phase of the community engagement. So here, I'm pretty much to my last slide. So the next steps on public engagement, you can see it's been, it's been very busy last couple of months. It started out with the meeting with the East Spokane Business Association on February 22nd. Here we are with you folks here on the council on April 20th, so all these meetings have already happened, and then we have all these meetings coming up. Basically, this is, this is going to culminate in a big workshop on May 10th. I mentioned the 7,000 mailers that are going out to get people to, if, at the very least, fill out the online survey, but maybe show up at this workshop where we're going to, they're going to see the same presentation, but then we're going to have stations around so that people can look at displays up close and ask questions. They'll be staffed by subject matter experts to answer questions like, how do I get to my house? If I'm on eastbound I-90 and stuff like that. So that's happening on May 10th. And then a couple of, a couple of meetings got scheduled after that meeting with SRTC's Board of Directors and then the Lincoln Heights Neighborhood Council. And then basically, we're going to close the survey on May 17th and then start looking at the feedback and the data with the expectation of making a decision about which alternate we're going to advance by the, around the 1st of June. So that is the QR code that brings you to the online survey. And I think I'm at the end of my presentation.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Yeah, thanks. I'm going to expand a little bit on Councilmember Cathcart's question because I, too, am concerned about congestion, and not just cars, but truck traffic. And I want to know if when you're doing your modeling, you are accommodating the number of trucks that you anticipate, because that is a major corridor going to Canada. So are we anticipating the amount of truck traffic that will continue through that corridor, number one? Number two, as he stated, that whole area, we're doing a subarea plan, how do we envision that portion of East Central going forward with more housing, more businesses, and just more people, cars, right there? Because to go out to 2040, by the time this is finished, honestly, I think it's going to be obsolete. I don't mean to sound like Debbie Downer, but we've been working on this for a really long time, and I just don't feel that there's the vision that we need to go. So how are we accommodating transit? All the things that we need to do as a city that's going to be a smart-growth city. This doesn't feel like that. Can you change my perspective and tell me I'm off-base?
Well, I don't know that I can tell you that you're entirely off-base, but what I can say is that, first of all, that the model does account for truck traffic, anticipated or predicted truck traffic. So that, that model does account for it. So when we do our traffic modeling, and I, I'm not a traffic engineer, I got to say that, I don't play one on TV either, so I rely on, we've hired consultants to do all the, all the engineering for us. But we start with SRTC's regional planning model. So they supposedly, they have accounted for land use and development and all the things in the out-year. So we start with that model, and then we, then we modify it by including our design into that and then running the travel demand and then the simulation. So it's not like WashDOT's developing the model and making guesses about what's going to happen in the future. We're, we're using the, the regional planning model.
So when you think about the entire corridor, let's say from west of 195, and there's so much truck traffic on 195, so it's going, coming south, you know, and then it is getting on I-90 there at that contorted intersection. And we're asking through traffic that doesn't want to go downtown, but just wants to get to points east, to get on to I-90 at that 195 interchange, then go through downtown, and then if they want to go east, they keep going. But if they want to go north, then they have to do some other little dipsy-doodle and then get on going north. It seems like we're asking them to do a lot of things that it could be so much simpler. This seems contorted to me. And I'm not an engineer, and I don't play one on TV.
But not compared to them going up Division. Like, right now, that's what they...
No, exactly.
Right now, they go up Division.
But I'm thinking there is an easier way to get people north rather than northeast-north. So they're taking this dip to go north, and that's what's confusing to me.
That's the dipsy-doodle.
That's the dipsy-doodle.
That's the dipsy-doodle.
That's the dipsy-doodle.
Or if, to quote Mr. Wright, "It's all higgly-piggly." So, yeah.
Get rid of that.
Yeah.
I know. I, I'm sorry, I left you speechless. I apologize.
Yeah, I mean, but, but Councilman Beggs brings up a, a good point, that, you know, the traffic now that wants to go further north and through town.
It's on division. I get it.
Yeah, it gets on division.
I get it.
So, so this, the, the design is gonna make it simple, right? You're just gonna go another mile or so past division, and you're just gonna be able to get on the NSC and, and take all that truck traffic off of division.
I had hoped we would be more direct, and come up with something more direct. And I know this has been in the planning for 70 years. So, and once it gets its, it gets started, it's really hard. It's like turning the Titanic, right? Not the Titanic, the Queen Mary. You can't stop it. And so we're rolling forward with this plan, when in reality, maybe in 1990s, we should have said, wait a minute, do we want people to be going through downtown at all, trucks specifically, when they don't have any intention or want to go downtown? What are we doing?
Yeah.
So I guess I'm, I'm being a little bit of the devil's advocate. And I understand you've got a lot of challenges. The other thing I want to ask, did you model from west of 195, and then take into consideration the traffic that's going to be coming through to add to the traffic that's getting on in the East Central neighborhood?
Yeah, so the limits of our model went all the way out to, I believe, Maple, but it, but it's still accounting for traffic that's on Interstate 90, you know, eastbound, westbound.
Okay.
But FHWA requires that you model one interchange either side of where you're proposing to make a connection. We actually went further than that.
Yeah.
Because that one interchange would have just been division, and then Broadway on the other side. But we actually went further than that in our model, just because we really wanted to account for, you know, all the traffic.
And we know the 195 interchange right there, it is already metered, and it is already going to have to be adjusted because, so there'll be longer wait times there.
Yeah, but this shouldn't, this isn't gonna affect.
We don't know that. That's why they.
But I'm just saying, I mean, it's not anticipated to, this isn't anticipated to affect that.
No, no, not at all. And, and, you know, the, I understand your, your point, that traffic, truck traffic on 195, and then the NSCs.
Yeah.
To the east, three, three miles or whatever, three or four miles. Unfortunately, like you said, I mean, the path was chosen 30 years ago.
Right.
And we're on that path, and also changing that path now is not even an option. The connection needs to be made where it's gonna need to be made.
I just hope we're looking at all, everything, as Councilmember Cathcart said, and that we are growing, that we are gonna be more congested. And I'm hopeful that we won't have the inner, the, the off-ramps and the off, on-ramps occurring at the same time as, as some of the, the places along I-90.
No, in fact, that's what those heat maps showed, is that we, through thoughtful design, we're actually going to clear up a lot of those, those issues. I mean, the reason we have that congestion today is because we have a lot of on-ramps and a lot of off-ramps right close to each other.
Yeah.
And, and I hate to say it, but those were terrible designs, you know, 40, 50 years ago, whatever it was. And we're, we're cleaning up a lot of that by, by doing things thoughtful designs, like, like what we call braided ramps, where we take traffic off of the interstate before we put the traffic on the interstate. Because right now, we put traffic on, and then we take it off, you know, quarter mile later, and that's creating those congested movement. And, and so the, at least with where the NSC is connecting, we're cleaning up a lot of what, a lot of that. We can, now, it's not cleaning up stuff between 195 and Hamilton, that's, that's still out there.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, so speaking of design, so I'm thinking about, there's an on-ramp on the west side of the state on I-90 where I think you're getting onto 405, and it's, you've got two options to go north-south. It's right there around like the Renton area. And you've got two lanes of traffic basically backed up, trying to get, one lane wants to, to go north, one lane wants to go south, and sometimes you're stuck in one, you can't get in the other. Is that what is gonna kind of happen on 90 with regards to, as you approach the NSC, and you want to maybe take Altamont to go to the South Hill versus getting on the NSC and go north? Are we gonna have that, where we've got two different lanes, and you're trying to maneuver through? Or will there be two very distinct, separate exits at different points to, to prevent that from happening?
There, there will be. Well, again, depending on which alternate, it's, it's different. But, but the original, I won't say the original, because the original was a collector distributor system, but we actually went through the interchange justification report. We changed the design in 2017. Actually, 2015, and went through a couple of year process to, to change the design. We had, and I, I don't have a picture of it, but basically, the off-ramp to the NSC in the eastbound direction shared the off-ramp to Hamilton. So you literally would take, you know, there's those two lanes today, and if you were in the right lane, you would go to the NSC. If you were in the left lane, you would continue on the Hamilton. And we actually took a hard look at that after we had that approved through FHWA and decided that, for that very reason, that's gonna cause that. Some people want to go left, some people want to go right, and that's gonna cause, you know, turbulence that we don't want. So now we've disconnected the off-ramp to the NSC, moved it through the S-curves, so that there isn't going to be that same level of, I want to get left, that car wants to get right, and we have that, that situation.
Okay.
So both of these designs changed that.
Great. Thank you.
This has been super helpful, by the way. But do you want specific, like, we can talk about it off, not in this meeting, we'll get done today. But if we come up with a consensus or are close to a consensus, do you want us to do that and say, yep, here's our resolution? We like alternate one or alternate two? Is that, is that helpful for you?
I think so.
Okay.
We, we, we had the same offer by the mayor's office on Tuesday, and we said yes to that. So I think it would be really, yeah.
And to be clear, we speak for the city on policy. I mean, we still want to know individually what the mayor says, but I just want to be clear about that, but.
Yes.
Councilmember Bringle?
I was just gonna make a small note that by 2040, all cars are gonna be automated anyway, and so the congestion is gonna be taken care of by computers, so.
Yeah, you're so optimistic.
We'll be flying, fly the cars.
We thought it was gonna be here now.
Yeah.
We're still waiting.
It's coming. Yeah, no, this was proposed before we landed on the moon, so. It's been a while. Yeah.
Some of us were alive when we landed on the moon.
Okay. Councilmember Wilkerson, then Councilmember Zepo.
I am not like opposed to a resolution, but I do not want anything coming from this council before the community has spoken, because I don't want it swayed that council weighed in, mayor weighed in, so therefore it could be a fait accompli in the citizens having spoken.
And so what, that's defined by the, what date was the big meeting, the 17th?
May 10th.
May 10th. So after May 10th.
After whatever comes out of that, I'd like that voice to be heard.
Oh, okay.
Good point. Councilmember Zepo.
I was just gonna add, everyone will be riding the bus by 2040, but.
And they'll be automated.
And electric. My question, though, was, can we get the 3D images? I don't think that was sent to us in our material.
Yes, absolutely. It's too big of a file to email, so I'll find another way to get it.
Yeah, give us a link to.
Yeah. And then my other question was, are, it seems like the second alternative has more bridges. Is, is that accurate?
That is accurate.
Are there considerations of maintenance costs ongoing, because bridges are more expensive to repair later? Is that not a major consideration?
We haven't really done a whole, you know, operation and maintenance lifecycle costs. We just kind of do the initial, you know, what's it gonna cost to construct this at this, at that point? So, but yeah, there's, more infrastructure causes more operations and maintenance costs.
All right.
This was really helpful. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
It was remarkably clear. So thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you. Yes. One more thank you. And also thank you for all the other alternates based on, you know, I know that that took a lot of time. And when we said, hey, maybe take a look at this, and I know that months of work went into all these different alternates. So thank you for that.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Great. All right, so we're gonna hear something about water conservation, and I'm assuming it's Lauren. Lauren Sherrill, come on up.
I'm just trying to eject my thumb drive real fast. I'm sorry.
I was mad.
Betsy, can we get copies of that?
Yes.
Oh, good afternoon, council.
Okay.
We are gonna talk about our, our water conservation program today. So when we get into the water conservation program, we actually do have two different halves of that. One's our operational side, that's our distribution system, our leakage, the, the smart metering system, and our, our 20-year system plan. We're not talking about that today. The conservation program we're talking about is the meter in the customer side. How are we communicating issues with the customer, and sending those policies, and getting collaboration to reduce the consumption on the customer side and the efficient use of, of the water that we So we'll start with our biggest partner, Parks and Rec. We, we, we put a lot of effort into working with Parks and Rec over the year, and can't, I can't give them enough kudos. They are the best performing entity that we have out there. They've really dove into this conservation and the efficient use of the water, and have made great changes there. In, in the last few years, we've, we've contributed a substantial amount of funds into some of their projects. We're now set at $250,000 a year that we, we contribute to their projects, to help keep them moving forward and making improvements in those.
And that's because it saves you so much money and reduces capital costs, if you get them to really lower.
The amount that we save in them reducing, if I, if we tried to provide that to individual customers, we would not see the same amount of reduction in the customer side as we do in the golf course.
But, but what I mean is by investing in them on conservation for the long term, that's fewer big tanks and fewer wells and things like that, that that's why it makes sense for ratepayers to invest in that.
Yes, yes. It, it does, we get that payback over that from their reduced usage. Of course, within their system, we've, we've done three golf courses. We've got Indian Canyon, Esmeralda, and Downriver. It, with it, Downriver is coming online now. Indian Canyon, we saw 35% reduction in their usage at Indian Canyon. Esmeralda was a resounding 66% reduction. And Downriver, we're expecting that 30%. We don't know that yet, because we haven't run a full, a year on that new system. In, in our graphs, there's two lines that kind of, what we can see on here is yellow shaded, is a water budget. So we have a software that lays out the vegetation that they have, and it accounts for weather patterns, how hot it's getting, what kind of moisture that we have, and what the park should be irrigating at. And then the blue line is what they actually irrigated at. So those golf courses, the, the reduced consumption in those golf courses, they actually irrigate below ET, so below their conservation budget. So they're using less water than what should be used in order to maintain their courses. And then we, we also did the Manitowoc Coipon with the parks. That saw a huge reduction in that. On our graph up here, of course, the, that, that meter is still on old technology. So we're looking at that a month late versus the technology that went into the golf courses. So their consumption has not, as we dial that back in, they haven't met full ET yet. But it is a drastic reduction in that pond. That's 16.2 million gallons a year that we do not use in that pond. And on top of what we aren't using, everything that goes into the pond hits the treatment plant. So we're also not treating 16.2 million gallons every year on that. Our other project that soon to come up, and hopefully will be out, built, being built this year, is the Cannon Hill Pond. That's our next large one that we, we've, now we've saved funds for three years over that, that we're contributing to get that done. We'll, we'll get the Coip, the Cannon Hill Pond lined, so, to hold the water in there. And then they're doing irrigation upgrades, which comes with new turf. They're, they have plans for new facilities there, new play equipment and everything. It's a revamp of the whole park. Be a really nice project when that one's done. We do, we do estimate, we lose about a million gallons a month of leakage out of the pond. So we're estimating about 12 million gallons per year savings on that pond. The unfortunate at the end of this one, these are our big, our big consumers. So those are the big projects that we could hit right away and see the biggest savings in them. So now we're really dwindling them down to like getting close to their minimum usage. So we don't have a whole lot of those big saving projects in line after the, after the Cannon Hill Pond.
Is that good news or bad news, Lauren?
It is great news in the amount of water that we save.
Yes.
And it, and it's a great message that the city has put all this effort into reducing ours, and the golf course being able to irrigate below their ET rates and still have beautiful green turf.
Just, just for context, what would be kind of an average amount of water an individual household would use in a year? Do you know? It's like 20,000, 50,000, 100,000?
That, that would be in the range of 400 units. That's about 40,000 gallons a month.
A month. Okay. Thanks.
Another, another side that we, we're, we have a consultant that's on board with us that works with commercial properties. They go in and they, they look at how the commercial property is using that water, and tries to come up with more efficient ways for them to use it. A big one is cooling towers. We, we go in and look at cooling towers, and those should be reusing water, and we find a lot of them that are single pass or only uses the water twice and then dumps the water. So we, we have found a lot of those towers that we improve, improve the efficiency in that, improve their fixtures for the things that they're manufacturing, and how they can use that water more efficiently in that. This year, or last year, that consultant went through 14 companies that we consulted with. One of them being the hospitals. The hospital system is a huge consumer. And we go in and look at all the facilities in there. Probably, we worked with Providence, Deaconess, and we went, went in Spokane Community Colleges, went through their distribution system, looking for leaks. We spent a lot of time over at SCC. They had some pretty big leaks in that that we were able to finally track down and get leaks in there fixed. We worked with HOAs that have high consumption, and it's really hard in a HOA, because you have all the homeowners that want to save water. And then they think that they're using less than the neighbors, and, and come to find out, it's leakage somewhere. So we spent a lot of time trying to track leakage down in HOAs and getting those reductions. Public schools, fire department, they go out and look at all these places and try and reduce them. In those, we installed 38 sub-meters for businesses. Sub-meter might be a meter on just a refrigerator system. So it says, this is the amount that is used on that one item, and can we make it run more efficiently? Overall, we saved 21 million gallons just in the commercial properties that we went out and looked at in that system.
And that's gonna be 20 million, 21 million gallons every year going forward for those?
Every year going forward.
Yeah.
Yep. That's over one year, and we can expect to see that every year.
Yep.
And then we have some really good case studies on that. Washington Trust Bank, they came to us and they asked for us to come out and do an audit for them. They have seven cooling towers that continually use water in those. And we, we did a review on the cooling towers and what their needs were, and they chose to eliminate four of those cooling towers. They didn't need those. So that, just off top, is that much that they're saving. And then we put sub-meters on the remaining three, so that we could see what each of those cooling towers are using. And then we found one of those that had a leak in it, had a broken valve in the, in the cooling tower. So that cooling tower, one of them was using 12,000 gallons a day. It should use around 1,000 gallons a day. So then, once we found that huge consumer, then you go in and you figure out what's wrong, and we fix that one problem in it. Just with Washington Trust Bank, the elimination of four cooling towers saved them two and a half million gallons a year. Fixing the one broken valve that we identified after that was an additional 4 million gallons a year that they save, just on fixing that valve.
What, for a business like this, saving six and a half million gallons per year, what's the, like, actual dollars and cents that they save on six and a half million gallons a year?
That's 6,000, 600,000 units on a commercial property. That could be, that could be.
That's over a buck a unit?
Yeah, it's over a buck a unit. 600,000 units that they're saving, they could.
So they're saving.
Sorry, 60,000 units. They'd save about $60,000. Yeah, it's over a buck a unit. 600,000 units that they're saving. They could-
So they're saving-
Sorry, 60,000 units. They'd save about $60,000.
And over a buck a unit? So they saved over $60,000 a year by getting this done? Did they, did it cost the business to have you guys come in and, and audit that for them?
It does not cost us to go in and do an audit. There, there is a fee, $100 per meter, submeter, that we put on. The parts that we use, the business pays for the parts. The broken valve that we found, they actually hired a plumber to come in and fix the valve. But for us to go in and do the audit, it is completely free.
So I'm wondering, is there a number, an average number that, that was sort of equate to needing to install another water tank, for example? So like, at what point do we say, oh, we need another, another water tank? We have this many new users, or this many more gallons are, are being used a month? What drives that decision?
That, that's, that's hard to lay out with all the different pressure zones. Ultimately, our pressure zones do only hold so much storage in them. And what we, what we can achieve in reduction on the conservation, we can hopefully save, make up for in growth, so that the growth can go farther before we build more tanks. It does depend on the area that they're building in. We don't have the additional capacity in some of the pressure zones to say conservation will ever reduce the, the need for storage in that pressure zone.
Okay.
Mark Patovich is going to be here on Monday to do over the water system plan, which we can kind of put on that with him. And remember that-
Arlene, we can't hear you.
Can you use the mic?
Fire flow. So fire flow also drives the need for tanks, to make sure that we have enough storage. So as, as communities grow, so if you're using less, we'll have less need for more infrastructure, but we still have to make sure that we have enough fire flow to serve all the new housing or businesses, the new growth. So, so there's sort of a little bit of push me, pull me in terms of storage.
I guess what I'm just trying to get to is, you know, can we say if we save this many gallons of water, that will negate the need for a new tank in the next 50 years? Or what, you know, whatever it might be?
Right. And in a, in a specific pressure zone, that, that would be very difficult. Now, but if you look at Washington Trust Bank, if they, if they reduce 12,000 gallons a day, that's three more houses that we could build and not need storage within those. If, if that house was next to that facility.
Right.
Yep. Keep going.
So what we saw in the Washington Trust when we put the submeters on, when you go through, we could actually see the consumption on that one cooling tower, and then put the, once we got it fixed, a drastic reduction every day on that, on that cooling tower. Another case study was one of the PUDs that we went into, that continually was calling to try and reduce their consumption, and trying to reduce what they're irrigating, reduce what their customers are doing. And we went in, we, we had our personnel doing leak detection inside of there. We detected 27 acre area to try and figure out what they had going on. Once we found, once we found the leak, the PUD did call in a plumber to dig it and fix that one leak. And we figured out, the repair reduced the water use by 1.6 million gallons per month. So that could be another 19 million gallons a year saved off of being able to find that. And it's one of those things, PUD, they don't have, they don't have ongoing leak detection. So where we try and reduce our DSL, PUDs don't, don't have that. So we offer that, and our guys go out in there and help them find that. Another one was Deaconess Hospital. The Deaconess reps worked with Water Wise team to install submeters, and those submeters are very useful in us knowing when those big facilities, where are they using those water? Installing submeter, the, the system maintenance identified large water use of about 2,000 gallons per day, and tracked it down to water lost in a valve hidden inside the mechanical room. So they had done some repairs in their mechanical room. Years ago, the valve was left, and it was left open. So it just continued to sit there and run every day for years, until we went in and did all the research to try and figure that out. So they fixed, they fixed that leak, and they fixed the leak, saving the, the amount of money in one year to pay for the plumber and the repairs, and ongoing is still a savings of, of money for that, that facility. Residential side, we have our consultant, consultation and education and our rebate program for the homeowners. We do the same thing for a homeowner. And everyone that I talk to about that program is always, no one really knows that's out there. And I talk to people in there, how do I get signed up for that? So we, we send one of our guys out to look inside of the, the home and try and do the same thing, whether it's the toilets, the showerheads, the irrigation system. Last year, we, we did 164 residential consultations in looking at all that stuff to try and figure out their reduction. Yeah, it does depend on what time of year we're able to do that. Of those, we were able to do 108 sprinkler systems and found 71 leaks for the homeowners. Yes.
How many consultations were requested? Was it 164 and we only got to 108? Or how many consultations were requested?
164 were requested.
And how many did we, did we, were we able to do all of them?
We completed 164. But in time of year, only 108 of those had sprinkler systems. The rest of them are looking at showerheads or sink faucets, toilets and that kind of stuff inside the house. This is one of the properties that we went out to, to, to do a consultation. And on the left, when we showed up, they couldn't figure out why they used so much water in their irrigation, and they kept turning the time limits up to dump more water on it. We went through it, found broken heads, fixed the, helped the homeowners to fix those heads, readjust the times. They, they changed over to the every, every other day watering schedule, reduced the time that they were watering, and on the right was when we were done with it. So we were able to reduce that, that homeowner's use and make the lawn look what they were, like what they wanted. It's, a broken head will make the entire zone look bad because it's not getting the water it needs.
Yeah.
We have outreach programs. These outreach programs where we go to an event and set up tables, talk to people, hand out our shower, showerheads and sink aerators, hose nozzles, that kind of stuff. We did 42 events last year with seven classroom presentations.
Okay, I gotta ask the question. Do we have the water truck that we take out? So it doesn't, we're not doing it anymore?
We don't, we don't have the water trailer, but we have the water conservation van.
So I can't get in the trailer and serve people water anymore at events?
It's not serving water. It is not. But we have the, the van that were taken out, and they set up tables, the booth that they have, and they hand out the little goodies. We don't have the running water.
But it was really fun to fill up somebody's water and hand them the water and ask them where they went to high school.
And, and you get, and you get more, and you do get people that come up because they, they want to drink. They didn't want to talk conservation, but they want the drink. And it is a way to open up conversations.
Lauren, so that last slide you showed where the homeowner had the lawn, one lawn looked one way, the other, okay, yeah. So I'm wondering if, when you guys go out, not to these, but when you have events that you go to, I'm wondering if you can include a landscape designer, I mean, I'd look at that and I'd go, too much lawn. And not that you need to do a Spokanescape, but you could modify that, cut the lawn in half, have a better design, and cut your water in half that way, too. So I'm wondering if there's a way that you can include somebody, you don't pay them, you just say, hey, come out and do some consultations and be there. People bring their pictures and you go, yeah, no, this is not good.
That is very exciting, and we will get to that.
Okay, good.
Yes. We can work on, we can work with that.
Not, it's not water wise.
Well, it's cutting up the lawns and all that.
But it's not Spokanescape. Sorry, side conference.
Okay.
And, and our rebate program, we, we did $54,000 in credits on our rebate program last year. We figure that's 42 million gallons saved. Our rebate program does cost, we, we can break that side out fairly easy. We have about a dollar investment per 74 gallons saved. It takes a lot, a lot more effort to get the rebates out there and get homeowners in, involved in doing those, which, but we are saving gallons on that side as well.
And again, that just, year after year, continues to accumulate those savings.
Those, that's, that's the first year. Every year after that, we're still consuming, accumulating savings. And we have a partnership with Flume. Flume is a company that has a magnetic reader that attaches on the outside of our meters. And it gives the, the homeowner the ability to look at usage on his meter. This is the data that we're trying to get to with our fixed network system, that we cannot display to customers yet. This displays that information for the customer. He can run one zone at a time on his irrigation, and it will tell, tell them that they used 1,000 gallons on that one irrigation zone. They can take a shower, and it will tell them they used 15 gallons on their shower. So it gets really minute information. Our partnership with Flume allows customers to get this at a very reduced rate. So it costs about $30 for that, for the customer in our rebate programs, and what our partnership with Flume, it costs the customer about $30 at the end to have that set up.
A year, a month?
One time.
One time?
One time. You buy it one time, and the reporting and the interface is lifetime availability.
Do we know how much the consumer saves? So a $30 investment, how much do they save in, in water costs moving forward?
That, that's completely up to the customer. So he-
This just tells them the information- Yeah, no, I know. -and they can then choose. But does it, do we have, you know, as it's been rolled out, do we have an average or something like that? Where the average customer saves 60 bucks a year, you know, something like that?
Right. So, so we just started that program last year. We got 157 of them installed. So we'll have that data. We can go back and say, 157 customers, did any of them reduce? It is still up to them to decide. This was too much water on my shower, and shortened their shower or something. The nice thing with the way that the program runs, it, they have some investment, they actually have to apply and contact Flume and get it. So, and then get it set up before they get all their rebates back on it. So it's people that actually want to, want the information, and they want to try and reduce their water. Hopefully, but next year, we'll be able to come back with this and know those numbers. And again, we have our, our partnership with the parks. So we save about 73 million gallons a year on the golf courses now, 16.2 million gallons on the Koi Pond. And we also worked with fire stations. We put in nine weather-based controllers inside of the fire stations, and did a full audit in, in their irrigation side, run all the sprinklers and fixing all these leaks within it. Firemen are really good at putting out a fire, and they do a really good job at mowing. But running the irrigation side, they had no idea how to do that. And we found so much, so many leaks on those that we were able to fix, and, and helped them improve the looks of their lawn. They're really proud of their, their lawns. So they've been, they've worked really well with us as well.
Got work to do.
And our marketing side. So we have our websites, website visitors, where I, are able to track, as well as our Facebook followers and our Instagrams. The numbers, the specific numbers aren't really that important, but website, we had 80, 38,000 visits on the website last year. But on each, each one of them, you can see that we continue to increase year after year. So it's not someone that just looked at it and walked away and forgot it. People are coming back, and the numbers grow every year. That also goes over to the city side with the Water Wise website and the Spokanescape, and the city's Facebook posts, and the Next Door posts. All of those sites that we're tracking, the, the visitors and the hits on, continue to grow. So people are interested in the program, and they continue to log in and get more information on them. We've also done some media buys with the, for the conservation side of it. And some of the, we did a 30-second post on Network TV, and which, which ran, and the community update comes with a link into the conservation side. So there's a lot of outreach that we do on the media in order to get the information out there. We have our drought response ordinance webpage that is ready to go live now. All the design has been put into it, and on that, we're posting our every other day watering schedule, as, as well as the links into the gauges, the water, river gauges to tell where we're at, the drought stage and all that. So the customers have that information of when they're transitioning to the next level of the conservation ordinance. And our education and technical side. So we also work with the customers to try and teach them the Spokanescape side and the technical side of how to do their, their landscaping. So we, we partnered with the WSU Master Gardeners on some demonstration gardens, so the citizens have somewhere to look at it, see what Spokanescape means. We have a Water Wise Wednesday Workshop, and we do have a designer at your door now. So with the Master Gardeners, we put in seven, seven Spokanescape educational gardens. They're, they are spread around the city. This one is at Second and Havana. We have, we did a garden at 14th and Grand. We have one at the Spokane, at the Water Department Yard. Nevada and Grace Well Stations were done in Spokanescape. We did one at the Shadle Art Library. The Indiana and Ruby Island, all of that vegetation that was taken out was transitioned into Spokanescape when we replaced that. The Spokane Monitessary School, and the On Track Academy. So it's places where citizens can see it and get an idea of what they're doing. The Havana site, we took out the, the grass that was not well-maintained and not, it couldn't get the right irrigation on it, put in Spokanescape, the whole walkway and everything, which it really improves the look of it and gives something for citizens to see. Our Water Wise Wednesday Workshops, we teamed up with the Shadle Park Library, because they installed the, the educational garden. We also have a workshop there every Wednesday night, 6 o'clock. We started that with 15 people. We, this is our, last night was our sixth night that we did it. Those 15 people came back with 15 friends. And those 30 people came back with 30 friends. Last night, we had 80 people attend the workshop. We did, we've done smart controllers, we've done rain barrels. Last night was drip irrigation. It's a time when we talk about that one subject, tell homeowners how they use that, how it's more efficient, and how they maintain that type of a system. 80 people showed up to learn about drip irrigation last night.
Awesome.
Sorry, I missed it because I needed, okay, but go ahead.
Every Wednesday, 6 o'clock.
I have to go.
We, a bunch of people have to go to meetings at 12:30, so.
Okay.
What you're-
To, to- To Councilmember Keneer's thing, we do have a designer at the door. We brought in a seasonal designer, landscape architect. She'll come out to the house and within an hour, do a drawing of your yard and a listing of different plants that this little shade area would take that kind of plant and this sun area takes that kind of, of a plant and give homeowners that better idea.
That's perfect, thank you.
Try and get people off the, off the stool and get them start to do something on their Consumption broke out between all of the different groups. That's, that is our residential side. Last year was 8.3 billion gallons on residential. Across the board, that consumption does continue.
Do we, do we maintain these records by, like by day even? Like can you look back on a particular day and see how much water citywide was utilized?
Only on pumping.
Only on pumping, okay.
On pumping, I can say how much we pumped each day, but not how much was consumed by each, each class of customer.
Okay. And so if we were trying to measure water conservation, would the pumping tell us? Would it give us that information? Or do we need to see exactly what the consumer is?
No, the, the pumping gives us that idea.
You'd know for the whole system, you just wouldn't know by where it's happening at.
Right, okay.
Yep. One thing I did want to point out in this, you'll see in the, in the presentation, the government, the government's the one thing that we think that we have control over. Government has climbed last year. We used more on the governmental side, even though that's where we're doing our conservation. There's, there's some errors fixed in the billing side and what was classified as what, as government, as well as we turned on a lot of element, a lot of schools. Those schools irrigated all summer long trying to get their new turf going. So that did, we saw a good tick up in governmental side because of that. So I don't want you to go.
All right. Thank you so much, so interesting.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, that was great.
And please give our best Ms. Zimmer.
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Wednesday nights.
All right. We're adjourned, everyone. Chris, I'm release, just go to your meeting, I'm gonna talk to Abby for a second, but she'll catch up.
Okay. Are we in person?